Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, July 25.
Let's start again.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for July 25. My name is Scott Bugby. To my left is Jim Leehan. To his left is Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator. And to Jack's left is Marion Hathaway.
Oh, boy.
Oh, God. I gotta start over. Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant.
Have some coffee.
Please be advised this meeting will be audio and videotaped and also replayed on NCTV.
And uploaded on YouTube.
And uploaded on YouTube. Thank you. We now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is that right?
Start with "I."
"I."
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack, can I turn it over to you to read the...
I've fumbled it pretty much all night.
First item of business, we have the Shubham?
Shubham, yeah.
Shubham. Shubham Variety, Inc., doing business as Linda's Variety, 158 Main Street. Application for a change of manager slash change of director. Second item of business is Fisher Hashem Emergency Access Road for 25 Rockwood Road, which will be tabled till future date. After that, we have report of warrants, action items. Please consider reviewing the directional signs for Jan Paul's, Cable Land, Fork Kicks, Norfolk Rank Management, and Dunkin' Donuts Subway Golf. Please consider appointing the poll workers for the town clerk. Request for a block party on Day Street. Extending the contract for a Cadish excavation of Walpole. Norfolk Girl Scouts request for Town Hill. And please consider opening the warrant, reviewing your goals and liaisons, and a new quarry policy. Discussion items including Southwood Housing Production Plan, 40Bs, Public Safety Projects, Recruiter, and Charter.
Do you guys like to join us up here?
If it please the Board. We'd like us to...
Yeah, it's probably easier for you. That way you don't have to speak into the mic. I think those are live.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Again, if it please the Board, my name is Arthur Pearlman. I represent Rekha Ben Patel and Shubham Variety, Inc., DBA Linda's Variety. They're seeking a change of the director as well as a change of the manager on the license. It's a package store all alcohol license currently held by Linda's Variety at 158 Main Street in Norfolk. Shubham Variety is a mass corporation. Rekha Ben Patel is now the sole director. Ms. Patel is currently living at 17 Robinwood Road in Norwood. Rekha Ben has worked at retail stores and is currently the manager on a beer and wine license in West Roxbury. Rekha Ben will spend at least 40 hours a week at this store in Norfolk. The business currently operating at 158 Main Street is open seven days a week, Monday through Saturday. It's open from 8:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, selling alcohol. And it's selling alcohol on Sunday from 10:00 o'clock until, I believe, it's 10:00 at night also on Sunday. They intend to maintain those hours. The layout of the store is not changing. Rekha Ben has been trained in the liquor business, is familiar with the laws relative to sale of alcohol. There's no change in the operation of the business or the family that now and in the future will own the business. It's just that Peter Patel, who was the director and the manager, has moved out of state. And as you know, the law requires that the manager and the director live in state. So therefore, he's turned it over to Rekha Ben, who's part of his family, and she will now be the sole director and the manager on the license. Otherwise, there's no change in ownership, no change in the business, and I respectfully request that this Board approve the change of manager on the license and the change of director.
No real questions, just a comment. Linda's Variety's been a very good business partner to Norfolk. Delightful people. I hope they stay. You know, very nice folks to work with, so...
Good. Thank you.
I just have one question. You've managed an office in West Roxbury?
Yes.
Did you have any violations of any kind there when you were there?
And is the new manager trained on alcohol surveys?
Tip program?
Tips trained, yeah. Tips changed, has certification.
Okay.
I have no other questions.
No, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Any other questions, comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And you didn't have to sing a single song.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
And your ears appreciate that.
Well said, sir.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right, Jack. Review the warrants.
Yeah, I mean, I can attest that I signed and reviewed the warrants.
I move to approve.
Second. I don't think we have to, but... All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some action items. Please vote to renew the directional sign permit for Jan Paul's farm, Cable Land, Fork Kicks, Norfolk Rank Management, and Dunkin' Donuts Subway Golf. These are all renewals.
No change. Everything's the same, right?
No issues, no complaints?
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please consider appointing the poll workers for the town clerk per the attached list, which is in your packet.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for volunteering, folks. Appreciate that.
It is a paid position, so volunteering is paid.
It's still a lot of long day.
It is.
Not like you ever get rich doing it either.
Please consider approve a block party at Day Street on Saturday, September 9, 2017, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. They're also asking permission to close a portion of Day Street from number two to number six. Day Street, Chief Stone, has approved. There's a letter in your...
Yeah, I read the letter, yeah.
And that's the same as always, right? Same closure spot, everything?
Done it. Yeah. Doesn't create any...
We have never had a complaint, have we?
Nope.
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're asking that you extend the contract for Richard Cadish. He does, is a contractor for the Department of Public Works. Under procurement laws, we have the right to extend that contract by a year, which is what we are hoping to do.
We already did that. Didn't he come in with Cadish when they married? He's shaking his head.
This is extending it, though. We haven't done that.
Okay, okay. I'll take a motion.
Yeah, I thought, with you, I thought we'd done it, but anyway.
When Cadish came up, but we...
I think we did the initial.
Just approved the initial?
This is extending it.
I feel like it was just the summary, but either way, that's fine.
I think you've seen some paperwork, but I don't think we've had a vote about it.
Okay. So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving along there, Coach.
I told you.
He's good at this.
And these are things we've done every year, so...
There's a letter in your packet, another, again, annual request from the Girl Scouts for the Jamboree and Picnic at the Gazeebo on Town Hill on September 13, 2017, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., with a rain date on September 20, 2017.
Assume it doesn't conflict, no conflicts or anything else. I mean, the farmer's market, what day of the week is this, Jack?
20th is a Thursday, I think.
Is that 13th? It's okay, man. The farmer's market's Friday.
I got it, Coach. I got it. 20th is a Wednesday.
A Wednesday?
Yeah. And the 13th is a Wednesday. Farmer's Market is Friday.
Yep. Motion?
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I know we've had some discussion about not having a Fall Town meeting. We've got a couple of issues in front of us, particularly the potential of the land next door to us, the...
Credit union?
Credit union that's being proposed. We're talking about trying to do a shared driveway down by where the mailbox is. So if we need to do that, we'd need to have Town Meeting approve that. There's also some roads that could be accepted as well as some capital items. Again, those aren't, that's not a urgently high priority, but something that we could address at the fall rather than the spring.
Any transfers?
No, I think we were gonna have one for the Police Department, but we were able to resolve that internally. I think that the time-sensitive one is the one that has to do with the credit union.
Why? Because they want to start construction on it?
They want to try and get their, yeah, they want to start construction on it, and they can't get, they can't get their Planning Board approval without going through Town Meeting.
Is that development contingent on that vote?
Well, the shared driveway is contingent on, the building itself is not contingent, but if they're gonna try and do a shared, in order for him to plan the drainage and the driveway, he needs to get, he needs to either plan it one way or another now.
So, another way of asking the question. If the town does not approve a shared driveway issue, can they still do the building?
Oh, absolutely. They just won't have a shared driveway.
All right.
And share, what's in it? I mean...
It's a beautiful building.
The benefit is that there'll just be one less, there will be one less outlet onto Liberty Lane. You know, instead of having one, two, three on this side and then the library on the other side, we'd only, we'd continue to only have two on this side.
It would eliminate some traffic congestion.
Yeah, and we're also trying, we're trying to see if we can, if this is approved, we're gonna try and see if we can add some, a couple parking places while we're doing work over on the town property, if we can add some parking places over there for people going into the Recreation Department. Because right now, they either park, they either park across Liberty Lane or they park in the back parking lot. You have to use the stairs.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Assuming we go forward with the Town Meeting and this becomes something, could we have, I don't know whether it's deplacado or member of the Planning Board or whomever, but could we have someone come to our meeting to explain, not the logic of it, I understand the logic of it, but basically exactly how it's gonna work, who pays for what?
Sure.
You know? I mean, I'm not gonna voice an opinion one way or the other, but I certainly don't want the town to incur any expense.
Is that your opinion, Jack? That, you know, I know it's early on the table, but that the shared driveway would be built at a developer's expense?
Yeah, I don't, if we, unless we get into, you know, complicated parking spots, which I actually don't think are gonna work out, probably gonna try and, because we've looked at it a number of times, going back to when Pichvito was here. But this is the first time we've actually put shovel in the ground over there.
With the shared parking spots, are you thinking of that for recreation?
Yes, recrea, yeah, recreation.
Yeah, okay.
Not shared parking spots, those would be Town Hall.
What you're thinking about is, as of the process, we would incur a cost for some of the parking spots...
Correct.
That would service recreation.
Correct.
Because I know they're in the front of the building and they always park over in the library to walk across the street.
And if the, and if the shared, and now you got me saying it, if the parking spots aren't possible, then 100%, I would expect 100% of the cost would be on the developer.
Okay. That's really my question.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
There's also a schedule...
What was the date that we technically picked? November 14?
And this is, if you flip your, past the action item, there's a Marion's provided U.S. schedule for, it's an accelerated schedule.
I don't have it here.
I didn't get it either, but, okay.
Number 14.
It's fine.
We'll share. We can share.
We have to.
All right, so we want a motion to, you want, so we want to go forward? You want, your recommendation then?
I'm recommending that we go forward. You know, I think we can, if we accept the roads, and these are the roads on...
Then we get the Chapter 90.
Around Peeny Pond and stuff, we can, yeah, we can justify the cost of Town Meeting because we're gonna get the Chapter 90 money for the additional roads that we accept.
Okay. I'll take a motion to open that.
Well, do we need to... Okay, so, did we ever set a formal date for them? Did we do that?
No.
I didn't think we did.
Well, we...
We talked about it, but we haven't voted a Town Meeting date or anything.
No, we picked a date and we let the, we reserved the school...
Did we vote, did we vote the date?
I think we did, too.
We voted the date, but we didn't open the warrant.
Yeah, all right. I'll go with that. I knew we picked a date. I didn't know if we voted or not.
I will move to open the warrant.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the warrant is open?
If we're gonna do that, we've got that prison mitigation money available.
Yes, through free cash, yes. Yep. So that would be our capital money.
Put together some capital.
Put together some thoughts on that?
We absolutely will.
Okay. Just to give folks at home a reminder, the final warrant article is due by 4:00 p.m. on September 7. Fall Town Meeting will be November 14.
Which is here before you know it.
Coming up.
Good.
Goals and liaisons.
Jeff's not here, so, I mean, I know we can't swap and do our liaison talk. I mean, we...
For Scott or for him? Both of them, right?
I'll sign on the right line.
You can sign any way you like, sir. You know, we'll wait till Jeff gets back, so we'll talk about liaisons and liaisons, if anyone wants to swap, trade, whatever they want to do.
Sure.
Same, I think same thing with goals, I mean, Marion provided with those, but...
I didn't know the result. We're not...
Yeah, it's okay.
No, not a problem.
Again, we're flexible. We're meeting a couple, you know, not too long from now. The quarry policy, Jack? What was, I saw, I read the word, I guess, is that a whole new policy or was it some items added? Like, I didn't see red lines, so I didn't jump right to what we...
Honestly, I don't know. I didn't get a chance to talk to Mr. Bragdon about this. I know the, I know the purpose of why he was doing this was so that he can be, for lack of a better word, an initiator of getting, of quarry-checking people on his own, not having to go through the Police Department. I honestly, it slipped my mind that this was on the agenda, so I think I'd like to have Scott come in and...
Why would that, I mean, why would he want to do that?
We get, we get asked to do quarry checks a lot for recreation events, for...
So this would replace, because the police get a different quarry than we...
Absolutely. They get a much...
Their quarry is a lot more detailed than our quarry.
Alls we get back is really a yes/no type of situation. The police do it and they get...
Very detailed report.
Very detailed activity and, you know, obviously criminal records, et cetera. We just get, this person failed. If, I suppose if we got that, we would then go to...
Wouldn't we want to have that?
We want to have this process?
I mean, wouldn't we want to continue to...
To the more extensive one, I think you were saying.
Well, I think, I think we're still getting the same answer, whether it's, whether the person...
But you only, the quarry, I think, that he gets only if there's a conviction.
Yep.
The quarry that the police get is if there have been 20 charges but no convictions.
Right. In my understanding, and again, I want to have, I want to have Scott here, because he can speak to this much more intelligently than I can. My understanding, though, is he can call, he can still get the same answer, you know, should we, should we have this person in this situation? Yes or no? He's not gonna get, you know, when the police call, they're gonna say, well, you, you know, when the police look up the data, rather, they're gonna get a situation where it says "no," but they're also gonna say, because of this, 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 and this. You know, if Scott gets the answer that says "no," we're gonna tell the person, "sorry, you can't, you know..."
Be a coach or whatever.
"You can't participate." Right. "You can't be a coach." And, you know, and if they wanted to challenge that and, you know, say that the quarry's wrong, then we would then obviously go down to the police station and go through the more detailed process. I believe part of the process for doing this is just to speed up, you know?
Expedite, yeah.
Expedite it.
I mean, I know all the volunteers and everybody all has to be quarrying.
So the police aren't going through.
I know it's a cumbersome process. I think it's a good thing they do that, but, okay. I was just curious why he, because I know, I've seen the difference between the two quarries. I'm just curious why he wanted to, but I can understand. I know every volunteer in school is quarried. Every coach is quarried. Everyone associated with the, working with kids is quarried, which...
Yeah, no, I used to have to get quarried. I used to get quarried all the time, as you said, to do coaching, so...
Yeah.
So we'll wait for Scott?
Yeah, we'll just wait for Scott.
Or next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
He offered to come, actually, and I...
That's okay.
Didn't respond to him. All right. So we had a meeting with Southwood today?
Oh, today. No, I went to Jim's and Harold's, so...
That was Jim's number two meeting, wasn't it?
No, that was my first meeting. 10:30. That was the first meeting.
Exciting news? Any news or just beginning the process?
Go ahead.
Not really exciting news, just beginning the process. They, they told us, they've had some potential developers reach out to them, but they haven't, you know, tried to strike a deal with anybody. It was Deb Dillon from the Archdiocese and then three real estate representatives from Collier.
Collier, yeah.
And...
So they marketing, is Collier marketing for them?
Collier's marketing for them. So they were coming to us just...
Yeah, we have a lot of them, you know.
They came to us and we had Bob Bullock there, John Weddleton from Concom and Planning Board, Jim and myself, and Chief Bushnell. And, you know, they asked us, what is, you know, before they go out marketing again, what are they looking, what are we looking for? And I don't want to oversimplify, but I think our, you know, the short answer is, we're looking, you know, A, we'd be happy with somebody complying with zoning that's there, which would allow 55 and over housing, which would allow commercial industrial development. You know, 55 and over housing at a, you know, we think three per acre units. We talked, and so, and then they started talking about the Hoboken project, and we expressed kind of, I think, the short answer again to our concerns about the Hoboken project was, it wasn't, you know, the testing wasn't done for the groundwater and septic...
Wasn't a single developer either, so a lot of unknowns.
Yeah, that he was gonna turn over the property to, he wasn't actually gonna develop it, he was gonna flip it. And then also that the density in the townhouses, from what we could tell by just looking at an eight and a half, 11 plan that they gave us, seemed, and of course, doing the math, seemed very dense and above what the town might be willing to accept. So they were gonna take, and, you know, we also talked about a whole lot of things, but the, you know, one thing being that, you know, and that, that plan was just a concept. So, you know, it may have looked A, B, and C on his plan, but it may have come in A, B, and C, you know?
In reality.
In reality. So we had some concerns about that, and that's, you know, where we were, when we were trying to tie everything up in a nice, neat package at the end, and we couldn't do it. That was one of the problems. So they were gonna, they're gonna market it, you know, we talked about our goals, trying to, trying to get to our 40, our...
10%.
10% threshold, trying to create some commercial down there, trying to create some assisted living and independent living, which would also help towards our 10% goal. So I think they kind of got the message. We talked about the issues with the infrastructure, particularly water, you know, that, you know, the 550 units represented 11% growth for the town, which obviously is a huge infrastructure issue. They can mitigate that, you know, in some aspects by doing 55 and over, so there's not an impact on the schools, but they still gotta work with us on the water issue. And certainly there are other, you know, public safety and other issues as well. So I think they heard, you know, again, work with us on zoning, work with us on infrastructure, the core and everything we learned from the plan with Hoboken, there's a lot of good things there that we learned from, and we're not, we don't think just throwing out that plan 100% is the right answer.
Yeah, a lot of time spent for well spent.
The only thing I'd add to that, I thought it was a good meeting because...
It was, oh, yeah.
They reached out, which they didn't do last time, to talk with us about what we would like to see happen there that wouldn't create an issue for the community, and that's always a positive thing. So I thought it was a good meeting. The one point that I would add to that is that in talking through what failed, one of the issues that was paramount for us was the fact that it was not a non-assignable agreement. In other words, they were making a deal with George, but George could then flip it and sell it to other developers. And that, that became really the breaking point for us because we couldn't...
Can't control it, really, right.
Well, we couldn't figure out how to close all those holes, and it became just too darn complicated. So I think the message to them was very clearly that we want a non-assignable consideration.
That was flat outstated, so...
Yeah, so I, if nothing else happened in that meeting, to me, that was, that was the most important thing. And, and they acknowledged that they normally do non-assignable agreements and that George was the one that lobbied, interestingly enough, to have it a non-assignable consideration, and that we really did not want to get into a set of circumstances again where we were gonna have a go-between that would end up flipping it to multiple developers that we couldn't control or manage. So, and they seemed in full agreement with that.
We also stressed to them that, that really the importance for the town, that they, you know, and this is probably pretty obvious, but they, they work with a reputable contractor who has the resources to do all the upfront work that we felt that wasn't done in the last...
So we can present a clear picture and actually know the unknowns.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to have a three-phase plan and have them leave after phase one.
Right.
And we want them to be able to do the testing that the town requires on stormwater and anything else prior to him getting any money back, him or her getting any money back out of the project, so...
What's the next, what do we leave as the next step?
They're going to, they're gonna put it on, you know, they're gonna market the plan. They would, they are gonna...
They said they were gonna mark up George's plan and bring it back to us.
Yeah, they want to take what George had developed, but downsize it. And he was talking 120 versus 220 units in that range. And would we find that acceptable? When we say, well, if you want to run it by us, we'll give it a quick turnaround, and then they can use that as a model as to how they might be able to market, that this is the type of development that the town would find acceptable, because frankly, if you lowered that 220 to 120, I'd find it a terrific opportunity.
Yeah, because it still had all the same affordable units that we had in the last one.
It'd be fantastic, because it would get us to 10%. Fantastic, because it would get us to ten percent. So.
They still have apartments, though?
Yep, well, quite honestly, Scott, that's the only way we're gonna get there.
Yeah.
That's the only way we're gonna get there. I mean, we're at four percent. Fifty-two towns out of three hundred and fifty-one or fifty-seven, I forget which the number is, have hit the ten percent. So, and they're all inside one twenty-eight, and now they're all outside one, four ninety-five. And we can't get there at ten or fifteen or eight or six a pop. I mean, with the new census out in two twenty, the way towns are getting there is with rentals. And if, and when you see the, well, we're gonna talk about it, but when you see the data that's showing up in this housing production plan, we have no rentals in town. None. None. Zero. Zero.
There's a couple.
There are none listed.
There's one, there's one down on one fifteen. Saw the sign today?
It's for sale. That house is for sale now. I mean, there are no listed rentals. It's, it's just, it's a tough place for a new family to come in.
No, I agree.
Median income is now a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in Norfolk. It's a tough place. We don't have a lot of affordable housing in town. But we'll, that's a different topic.
Next topic is the housing production.
Right into it. Go ahead, yeah.
Well, we, we had a, we had our first, what I'd call our public hearing process with a consultant last Monday. We had thirty-some odd people there. She was pleased with that turnout. I must admit, I was disappointed with that turnout. I, I wish to heck we could get more people involved, but I know July is a tough month. It's hard for folks with families to get out. But, but it was a good, it was a good workshop. We had individual tables, people were very free to give their opinions around certain issues and topics. I actually have for you, I think I brought it with me, a, I hope I brought, I might've left it at home. Sorry. Yeah, I guess I changed, I changed, I changed folders, yeah. Sorry about that. I, I will get it to Jack and he can put it in your box, but we got the feedback, we had a meeting today at noon to go over her interpretation of what happened in that meeting. There's another meeting scheduled for September fourteenth, I believe. I don't wanna get the wrong date, hold on. Uh, yeah, September fourteenth. We're gonna expand that from a two-hour to a three-hour meeting to give people more freedom to have input to the process. We are on schedule to come before the board and the planning board by the twenty-third of September. And to be in our meeting, the second meeting in September, which I think is the twenty-sixth. So I'm sorry, we're gonna have the initial report to the nineteenth of September to all the board members for them to review. And then the formal presentation on the twenty-sixth, hopefully for a vote by the planning board as well as the board of selectmen. If that vote is positive, then she'll submit it to the state. Most likely will get, I mean, her batting average on certification is a hundred, a hundred percent. So we expect to have that certified within thirty days and we'll be in business. So we're on target. She's doing a great job. She's very thorough. And, you know, people are struggling with separating a housing production plan with the issues associated with forty-B. And I know they're, they're somewhat wrapped up, but they're, they're separate and they're needs. So, good, good progress. And I guess it really kinda incorporates the second item there.
Talk about, you wanna talk about the-
Go to the public safety.
Alright, so public safety projects we met today. And as you probably already know, we've started construction on the police station. They have stripped the building. They've torn up the portions of the foundation, the concrete slab that they were scheduled to take out and re-poured some. Now they've gotta put foundation in where they're gonna put additional steel into the building. The project manager and the architect seem to feel that they're, they've been going great guns up there. And, you know, it's a little too early to tell whether they're on schedule or not, but they, but they certainly aren't following. They're, they're, they've been impressed with the, the work, the speed of work up there. We, we've also continued to work on the fire station.
I did bring this for you.
We've got-
Yeah, we've been through about fifteen iterations of this.
We're continuing to tweak the, the design. There was a very good, healthy discussion today, including members of the fire department with us, talking about some interior changes.
Differences.
Yeah, so we're, you know, we're talking about making some changes and using some, reusing some of the old base space for additional space, which really converts from single showers to locker room type area.
Here, what's the difference?
This is the plan for that. This is a variation of the plan that we think works.
See?
See.
Works when you say like fits and budget, I assume it's kinda both, right?
Both, both, yeah.
Yeah, so as far as the budget goes, right now-
Needs and cost.
Yeah, right, right now, the, the estimates are based on the architect and the project manager's cost estimates, based on square footage of renovation and, and new space. What we've authorized today is for them to go out for a professional cost estimator to give us an estimate on Plan C there that Jim has in front of him, as well as looking at the incremental cost of going to Plan F, which is, which is just a slight variation, but incorporates some things for the, that the fire department is requesting.
I know folks at home can't see this, but, but we, we did video the meeting today. So anybody that wants to follow along the project, it was on at four o'clock this afternoon, and I guess we finished up close to six. But this is the footprint of the existing building. This would be the new addition component, which basically is three ninety-foot bays. This, this plan does take away two of the existing bays, which I must admit, from my perspective, concerned me a little. The original plan only had two bays over here and then retaining all of these bays. So the, the Cliff Note version of this is that this plan reduces our capacity by one vehicle.
What does it add? What does it give them?
Well, it, it gives them, they need, they need training capability. It, it's a better design for people to work through.
Yeah, it's a better design.
It's a better design, and it, their concern, and rightfully so, was that the original design, which had the four bays retaining and two bays over here, is that they've got different vehicles going out from different sides.
Okay.
And that in certain sets of emergency, that creates delays. Whereas in this design, all of the fun, all of the primary vehicles can go into this new section. These would be more support cars, you know, coal and, and things of that nature. These would be more support vehicles. So they're, they're, I think they've done, and the fire guys have done a great job in contributing how to manage through the flow. But it does take away two bays. To offset that, we added the third bay. Just doing the numbers, you've got two cars per bay, three cars over here, you lose one bay. The concern I had on this originally is I'm, I'm very reluctant to give up base space. Because as you know, we can't house all our vehicles now. We got them in the garage in the back, we got them in the garage across the street. And one of the intent was, was to build a facility that will house all of our equipment. This'll still do that, but it somewhat limits our growth potential. So, I mean, we have two ambulances now. Ten years ago, we had one.
Right.
So, you know, if, if ten years from now we have three, we've only got one spot to grow. And if we need a third pumper, you know, who knows? I mean, we, we don't know. Certainly we won't have a ladder truck, but, you know, I mean, pumpers and ambulances are our two most prolific vehicles. They're the ones that are used the most. So.
What, I mean, you know, just, it also gives us much better bays.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then what?
Well, these, these bays are too short and the doors are too narrow.
Right.
You know, they were built in the sixties for trucks that were smaller.
Those, those can't be for the regular trucks.
I don't know how many mirrors we've knocked off, and I know we've hit the wall at least four or five times. So we, we have to do this. The issue is whether we build two or three and retained or went away. The fire guys are, are really pushing for this plan. And the only difference is that it takes away this back bay, which instead of just losing one vehicle, we now lose three.
Right, right.
But what they get is they get a better flow and, and a better locker room concept as opposed to the lockers here being a hall. These lockers are now in a, in a specific room. If, in the ideal world, this would be a better design if you had to live there. From a functional perspective, just my opinion, this is a better design in terms of use for the town. So what, what we've agreed to do is to price this out with this as an option.
Okay.
Because this involves a lot of plumbing and a lot of work, none of which is here, because this is just a bay. So we know this is gonna cost more than this. We just don't know how much.
So we, you know, I don't wanna sound pessimistic, but, but part of, you know, part of going through this exercise, if, if the incremental costs prove to be too significant, then that'll knock out that option without us having to discuss it anymore.
Right. This is, this is, this is a real issue to the folks. The fire guys are really strong on this. But we've got, as you can see here, we've got two point five million for the addition. We've got one point one million for the renovation, and we've got one point two for site, which is high. But part of that is 'cause we're building contingency.
Right.
We know we've got asbestos in this building, you know, it goes back to the sixties. So we know we're gonna, as we get into it, we're gonna find some issues that while we anticipated it and we priced it, there's always something in there you didn't know, always. So we don't wanna get into the contingency. And we, the only thing we do know is that this will cost more.
Right.
How much more we don't know.
Makes sense.
So we thought, let's, let's, let's price it as a contingency, as an option, and it, it may answer itself.
If it doesn't, we still have to decide whether we wanna give it a second price.
I'll admit, I'm still gonna struggle with the bays, 'cause as I, I philosophically, while I, I understand this and I appreciate their input on it, I have a problem with giving up three-quarters of the existing bays when one of the major issues that we had from day one was we wanted to house all our equipment.
Right, okay.
This'll still do it, but it leaves no room for growth.
We're gonna have growth, I mean, given where the town's going, there's no reason-
Logic would tell me that.
Right.
The other, the other thing, Scott, that's kinda curious about this, is that, you know, I mean, right now, the fire department is a male-dominated business.
Right.
We do have one female firefighter, and we've had two in the past.
We've one call, yeah, we have one female full-time and one call firefighter.
So we've had three over, over the years, in the last ten years. This layout, hypothetically, if you ever had a situation where you had, I think we've got, what have we got, thirteen guys?
Yes.
One in fourteen, thirteen going on fourteen. We've got thirteen guys. If we were to have a situation where we had seven guys and six women, this does not, what this does is it's, it's got women waiting in the hall to take a shower, because it's a single-unit shower for female staff. It, it does not accommodate a shifting of the male-female relationship. That's the problem with that plan.
So, so it comes down to having two showers in the men's locker room, one shower in the female locker room, versus the other plan, which just has four-
Individual showers.
Individual showers, which gives you, which obviously gives you-
It was a unisex plan, look at it that way.
Gives you more flexibility.
Yeah.
Which I, I agree with Jim on the, the bays, but I also am pretty strongly cemented in the, I'd rather have the flexible shower space.
You made that very clear today.
I think I did.
Okay, so we'll see. We'll, we'll price it out, you know, we're not gonna judge. We'll wait to see how it comes out. It was a good meeting. As I said, we're on target so far, anyway.
Uh, the next item was recruiter. We've had, as you know, we've been searching for a new, for a placement for Ray Goff as town planner. And we've been struggling to, to find strong, qualified candidates. We've, we've had a few, you know, potentials, but what we, what was suggested to us by some experts and some people with some experience, yeah, some non-experts, is that it may be time to hire a recruiter. Scott reached out to some people who work in the municipal industry and, you know, specialize in recruiting in that field.
I get emails for that, maybe because I attended that MMA, there's a firm that's big in that Massachusetts does that.
Yeah, there's, there's one, there's a couple that are-
Probably in here, they probably advertise in here, too, right?
They are, they are.
One that begins with a C, I can't-
We wanna find a guy that's employed, not a guy that's unemployed.
Right. So Scott-
Only recruiter's gonna find that.
Scott, you know, one of the, one of the folks that he found that, that seemed to have a good reputation and a strong background in the, in municipal field and, and, you know, had, felt he could find some planners, it was about a four thousand dollar fee, which seemed relatively-
Pretty cheap.
Yeah, so is it, is it a retain fee or is it contingency fee, or is it absolutely?
Both.
Yeah, he, I know he handled a conversation with you, so.
Yeah, there's a component of it that, that's a fixed expense that's, and then there's a component that's contingent on the hire and an expectancy on how long the person stays.
And that doesn't go before, it's gonna be, all that will come into only four? That's pretty cheap, easily.
It's dirt cheap.
Sure it's good, then, no, 'cause I, yeah, 'cause I get-
These normally run anywhere from ten to thirty percent of base salary, so it's, it's a dirt-cheap situation.
And then you talked about being able to add on for about another fifteen hundred dollars to help us find a water superintendent, which would be very helpful, too. So I didn't wanna go-
I thought it was a good deal and they're a good reputation, so I-
I mean, I think, you know, obviously, we don't have that amount of money in our, but, I mean, we have, obviously, we can pay for that out of the budget, but I think at the Fall Town Meeting, you know, out of the selectmen's budget, we could transfer some of the salary line, Adam, from the planner.
We don't, we don't have any money in the selectmen's budget.
I was gonna say, what kind of selectmen's budget is that?
Come on.
I get you. So, okay. Can we have, take a question? Aaron, did you have a que, grab the microphone, just give us your name and address. Make sure it's turned on, it'll go on green.
Grab, grab the microphone.
Just sit over here.
Sit over there. How are you? Good to see you.
You wanna be a planner?
I know, thanks. Tempting. Aaron Hunt, two sixty-six Main Street.
Careful for what you wish.
I was just, I was gonna ask the question of where we've advertised, but I guess I'll ask a more specific question. I know the Boston Society of Architects has a job board. Might be a good spot to-
And we haven't, we haven't done it on the architect.
We've focused on the municipal area.
Put it in here.
You know, there are a lot of publications and-
Look at like the back, they usually advertise there.
Networking that's done around the municipal side of the business. So we were trying to focus on someone that has the experience in dealing with municipal government as opposed to the, if I would say, the non-municipal side, 'cause it's a different world.
Couple pages in there, they have the help wanted section. There's always ads for town planners. There seems to be a big demand for town planners, which is unfortunate.
Jack reads it every week.
That's a low fit there. In my job search?
Now, that Scott has maybe time to do it or call, I mean, like you said, you wanna get someone that's employed, I mean, I don't know how to, ask this, but like, who are the best planners? I mean, I could, not me personally, but you just practice that call. Like, if you like Paige Duncan over at Foxville, you pick up the phone and say, listen, just like I'm sure they do to you, you wanna make a switch, do we know who we, I get with, I don't have a professional do it, maybe Scott could do it, too, I don't know his schedule, but me, it's just like, do we have, you know, who do we think is the best?
We tend not to-
Poach, is it?
We tend not to poach, I mean, we certainly-
Recruiter poach.
We've posted, we've posted on the-
Well, that's an honest answer, yeah.
Mass Municipal Planners Association, we've done it on the Mass Municipal Management Association, which is tied into that magazine that you're talking about, so the online version as well as the printed version.
Yeah.
Somebody suggested today that we reach out to UMass, they had some contacts there, so Scott either did that this afternoon or will do that tomorrow morning.
We welcome any ideas.
Yeah, so, you know.
We haven't, I haven't seen the Chronicle, we did not put in the Chronicle, I know that's not really-
We didn't put in the Chronicle.
You don't wanna be, you want, you know.
You, you know, it's, it's, we've, we have found that the Chronicle and the Globe, just the print ads
Are expensive.
Are expensive.
I know like ZipRecruiter, I know people, I know they, that's more high-tech stuff, but-
Yeah, he has done some of the, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if he did it directly through Monster or whatever that other-
ZipRecruiter seems to be the fastest one now.
Zip is the hot item.
Yeah, they find, they supposedly find the candidate, the right candidate. Again, it's easier said than done, Jack. And if we're looking at that, I've looked at the back, there's, like I said, it's a bunch of town planner jobs open. Even though we're the most desirable town in America.
On the Town Planner Association site, there are currently fourteen towns looking for town planners, so.
Right, so, yeah, you know what I mean, yeah.
I, I mean, I, I know in my-
So if you wanna go to school and learn a craft, go, go get a town planner.
I found that, that there were recruiters that were very specialized.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I-
If you really were looking for the right kind of candidate for, you know, especially in the investment business, if I were looking for a, a bond manager or someone like that, I wanted someone that-
Hendrix struggles, yeah, go to Hendrix, yeah.
You just had to, you had to deal with a recruiter that specialized in, in bond managers, because otherwise you just got all kinds of crazy people applying, so.
I know, I, I don't know him personally, but I know the name of the, you know, Bernie Lynch was the guy that Scott, you know, was close to striking a deal with. He was a longtime town manager in Canton. He literally has like forty years and, you know, he's retired now as a town manager, has, has like forty years experience. So I know, you know, president of the MMA at, at one point, you know, well-respected guy. Obviously has a million contacts after being-
And well, and well-networked.
Yeah.
Because that's the key to recruiting.
So, you know, my only thought is that I'm, you know, I wanna get this position filled as quickly as possible, just-
'Cause we have a lot of stuff to get.
There's a lot of stuff going on and, and, you know, it's, it's a good safety net area for us to, to kinda bring all the land use boards together, as well as with the selectmen.
It was a bad time to lose them.
It was.
So what do you need, a vote for it? I mean, I'm, I think, like you said, you, you tell, you tell if you have the money.
Actually, you need a vote, I just wanted to run by you the concept of-
Do you wanna vote just to be silent?
Sure.
I move to approve the expense for a recruiter to find a planner not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
I was just gonna say, and then, and we'll, we'll probably need to do a transfer at the Fall Town Meeting to backfill at least a portion of that money. And, and we could probably use the money in the planner's salary line to, to fund that, so.
Did Aaron have another question?
I don't think so.
Aaron, do you have another question, or are you just thinking?
Uh, I'm actually on DSA website seeing it.
Yeah, see if you can save us five-
There are no planning jobs listed.
See if you can find, you can save us five thousand dollars. You have a few days, Aaron, to save us five thousand, US tax, you know, all this.
We'd be grateful, Aaron, if you can work that one out. Like my grandkids sitting there just whipping through that phone, I don't know, just, try Google, see if you can get anybody there.
Who wants to be a town planner?
The last one I just, I threw on, kind of, kind of as a, as a, as a funny thing.
You were just having fun.
I was just having fun with Marion. I do think at, at some point, we need to have a conversation about doing a charter. You know, whether it's the, you know, I think we're gonna probably go through the town clerk process without going through a charter, but, you know, whether it's the town clerk becoming, going from elected to appointed, we've talked about the recreation board going from elected to appointed. You know, the DPW director technically reports to the board of selectmen, the police chief and fire chief technically report to the selectmen. And, you know, and I know-
Town administrator versus town manager?
I know, yeah.
Well, but no, that's one of the issues of the charter.
A personal goal of mine, well, yeah, you don't, but we wouldn't have to, I mean, rent them, went through a charter and still ends up with a town administrator, so it's, you know. Yes, as a personal goal of mine, I would love to be, have the title of town manager. I haven't had a promotion in, uh-
Can we call you an acting town manager then?
Twelve years.
No, no, no response.
So it's, you know, it's a, that's maybe four times as long as I've ever gone without a promotion for, and that, that's not driving me-
You've also had longevity, which in the case of town managers-
Yeah, no, and that's not driving, that's a side issue. It's not, not a driving issue. But I do, you know, I would like to have the organ, I think it would be great at some point in the near future to look at the organization as a whole and, you know, whether you folks change or I change, you've delegated the responsibility of managing, and we've had a great relationship of managing the, the department heads. You've, you've left that to me, you've, you've set policy and I've managed. But from a, but if we had a, if we had a, to use a lack of a better word, if we had a more aggressive,
Meddlesome.
More micro-managing, a more meddlesome board, there could, there would, or, or you had a manager with a different style, you could have friction-
You could have a lot of conflict.
About, you know, this is my role, this is your role, yeah. So it's, so I just think it's, it's, you know, it's, we've grown so much from the time that we went through the last-
Which was in the nineties.
Process, and we made those bylaw changes, yeah, which was before my time. I just think it's a good time to, to go through that and, and, and like I said, I think, I think the, you know, the, the areas that are high priority to me are, again, like the recreation board, I think we've always had a hard time finding enough people to run for recreation. I think we'd have more success if we could have that be an appointed board, so, because those people aren't always looking for it to run.
It'd be a great topic. I know the town clerk is, well, you, you remember, the town clerk has approached us to, she wants the, the town clerk to be in an appointed position. You were the benefactor of the original charter.
Right, I was the first finance director.
We went from an elected finance director to an appointed finance director.
Well, we went from, yeah, we didn't have, yes.
Yeah, well, we didn't technically, but we created the finance department, and instead of having elected positions in there, we made it an appointed position, and you were our first finance director. You know, the old form of town government, which, which in some regards unfortunately can be a beauty contest and who's mad at who, these jobs now require a level of competency that sometimes you may not find in an elected situation, and so I don't have, charter process is long, takes a couple of years.
Yeah, it does.
To go through.
Yeah, makes sense, I mean.
But what harm does it do to get folks involved and take a look and see if there's a better way to run things, I mean, I'd be all for it.
And I, you know, and then internally, I would love to have people looking at the structure of the organization, you know, within the whole government, I mean, you know, I have, I think it's 10 or 11 direct reports, you know, I wouldn't mind shifting that a little bit and have a few.
You seem to be pushing off a lot on Todd, you're getting there, Jack, you keep going, you got Todd doing stuff.
Todd's been a great ad, and he's one of those guys that's willing to take on more responsibility, and that's been great.
I know Marion really runs the ship anyway.
You know, the facilities department, I don't think is.
They're all scared to death of her.
We've had a good, I've had a good, great relationship with Ingrid over at the school, and we've got some shared departments now, actually, we've gone back down to one because we just share the facilities department, but she and I have had the discussion about that really doesn't belong under the school umbrella, I think it ultimately could be part of the DPW, you know.
Well, I mean, we've been very fortunate, I mean.
Oh, and I have a great relationship with Ingrid, yeah.
In the last four or five years, we've had, been very blessed with having people that don't get into turf wars, and that have looked at this in a holistic way and saying, what serves the town?
Right.
What is the best, and Ingrid's been outstanding at that.
If we go back four superintendents, I'm not going to agree with that.
You're right, I mean, we've had, you and I have experienced those turf wars, and they're painful, because people forget why they're here, you know, people can disagree with decisions, that's okay, but, you know, we're still just trying to do the right thing, and they all live here, so Ingrid has just been phenomenal.
Absolutely. Anyway, so I just.
So, I mean, I'm all for it, do you want to, how do we be, I've forgotten how we begin that process, I've forgotten.
Form a charter committee or look back?
We have to form a charter committee, I think we have to vote to form the committee?
There's two, there's two very distinct paths to go through, yeah, one is to vote to form the committee, another one I thought was like, you go directly to town meeting, but let me, that was.
Check it out.
We did a lot with Coleman and Page on that and.
Yeah, because they talked, didn't they come and give us a little thing on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, town meeting has to approve no matter what we do anyway.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, but, you know, I'd take the course of least resistance.
And we got to get this done before Marion retires.
Make her a strong executive, you want to make her a strong executive assistant? She already is strong, yeah.
You have some folks here, I don't know if they have any, we never have an audience, did you?
Well, you know, we got nothing else to do. We had secured a babysitter because we were hoping that the agenda.
Is there a mic, you want to come up here then, or grab the microphone?
I don't want to sit with you guys.
I love the sweatshirt.
I came representing.
Where'd you get that?
Freeman Kennedy, no, it's like a PTO or.
Oh, that's a great sweatshirt.
It is, it's long play, very, from Christmas.
Pyjamas. So my name is Martha Henry, I'm from 30 Boardman Street, I'm sure you know who I am, I've sent you all an email not too long ago, we originally came to talk about the emergency access road that was listed on your agenda just recently, that then was taken off the agenda, so I have questions of why that happened, I have gotten mixed messages from the beginning of the 25 Rockwood Road project around the 40B project, around who wants an emergency access road, who's requesting the road, who's pushing the road, I've been in every single ZBA meeting, I also then go home and watch the end of those ZBA meetings, and there were comments made, not this past meeting on the 19th, but in the June meeting, that the chairman really does want that emergency road, and I want to understand why, I want to understand, what is the process, which way does the request go? I have felt that there's been a lack of transparency, and I want that to be, that to be different, if it's the ZBA chair, Mr. Kaluza, requesting the emergency road, then why is he telling me he has no right to ask the developer for that, and that the only way that the developer could get that, which he has said to us both privately and publicly, he and his attorney, in every meeting, that he does not need that road, he does not want to go through the process of getting that road, and he doesn't want the road, so I'm just trying to get an understanding of how does it work, and I don't want to be caught off guard with the road that you, Mr. Leehan, said you would never allow to be paved while you were on the board.
Correct.
So I appreciate that, and I wanted to thank you in person for saying that, and I know that you shared that with the developer.
Yes.
So I appreciate that transparency, so I'm just trying to get an understanding of which direction does it go, what are the rules, and I don't want to be caught off guard, again, around this emergency road, and the attorney on the 19th said, look, we have a gate, we've already spoken to the fire chief who says, yep, this design, I can turn my truck around, I don't need another road, Mr. Hanson at the ZBA at the end of that meeting that I referred to in June said, why don't we use that road for construction, why don't we use the road that has been in dispute as a construction road and put all of the construction onto Boardman Street and take it off of Rockwood, and my response was, like the construction road for Freeman Kennedy, that was built originally as a temporary construction road that we all know, well.
No, no, that's not true.
Okay, good, so there's some.
No, let me, because I was part of that, just let me address the Freeman Kennedy School, that was never presented as a construction road, your information is incorrect.
Okay, good.
That road was always presented as an access road, what we said was that it would not become a permanent road that would be developed, and we've kept that word, there are no homes being built, there, you know, there's no, that always was intended to be a secondary access in and out as an egress and entrance to that school from day one.
Okay, good.
That was never presented any other way.
So my, so my question was, why in that project was it so important to take the construction off of Boardman Street and put it on to 115 through that road?
Well, go ahead.
No, because for, you know, as I remember the process, the, if you, kids are old enough to have been going to Freeman Centennial School.
No, we christened the Freeman Kennedy.
So, and my daughter was the last one to graduate from the Freeman Centennial, so we just missed.
My grandkids are still there.
I know, my kids are with your kids, your grandkids.
So the, so the traffic on Boardman Street, the bus, the parents waiting for, to either pick up or drop off in the morning, would literally back up all the way down Boardman Street close to 115, so there was no way that construction traffic was going to go through that mess, and buses were going to go, it was hard enough when buses, because when buses would try and pass all that traffic, you couldn't get another car going the other, on the westbound direction on Boardman Street, so we knew, we had several problems, we knew we needed an access road for construction, so during the construction of the Freeman Kennedy School, we, we built the access road for construction purposes, because then all the construction traffic could go in, and Boardman Street would continue to serve the Freeman Centennial School, which for two years was still in existence, once the Freeman Kennedy School came up online and we tore down the Freeman Centennial score, school, we then had the ability to improve the whole process of dropping off kids and all that stuff by having another entrance into, from, directly from 115 versus on Boardman Street, so.
So that's great, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're always, there's always issues associated with how, you know, things, but I remember this one vividly, because I was one of the real advocates for having that as a secondary egress, because frankly, we wanted to alleviate some of the burden that was on Boardman Street.
It makes sense.
I'm sorry?
It makes sense.
Yeah.
I think it's better, I think it's more received today, right?
We.
Voting Day, every day.
Talking about transparency, if you go back and look at the old tapes, and you can get them on YouTube.
Oh, I know, I can.
You will, you will find that from day one, at least speaking for me, I won't speak for any other board members, that was never presented in any other way, that was clearly going to be an egress in and out, we had very, a lot of concerns about Boardman Street with the traffic and all of that.
It was a construction road during construction.
Yeah, right.
But it was always intended to then become a permanent.
Right, we didn't want to finish the road and have all those heavy trucks and all that equipment going down and ruining the road, so it was a dirt road to begin with, and then once all that finished up, we finished the road, the commitment and the issue that was so emotional about for folks, and rightfully so, is that there are building lots that could be along that road, we didn't build that as, as a standard road for the center of town, that's more a driveway for all intents and purposes, so we kept our commitment, we, you know, that's, that's one that we went, I'll stand, you check, check the record on that one, I'll stand by that one, I mean, you may disagree with the decision, but.
No, I actually don't actually disagree with the decision, I just.
We were never, we never, that was from day one.
That's good, and I don't, you know, I do think it's a safer, better entrance.
Yeah, I do too.
So in terms of 25 Rockwood, I'm struggling with where the messages are coming from.
So.
Requesting.
So.
And can we get some clear direction from the Board of Selectmen who are in charge of, the only ones who could give that away, when clearly the ZBA is pushing that they want to see that access road being used for emergency access for whatever reason, and want to see that road paved, but if that is in fact the Board of Selectmen's opinion, that you want to see that right given to the, to the, a private developer, that's where the confusion.
Let's hold it, let's.
Why would we give land that the town owns?
But hold it, hold it, hold it, let's back up for a sec, there is no opinion at this point, no one, I mean.
Jump into a conclusion.
You're going way beyond where we are, no one has approached us about that land, it was on the agenda because the developer.
Let me rephrase that.
That's what I'm asking, there's very mixed messages.
Well, but hold it, hold it, let's.
Nobody has approached us at a public meeting, I think.
Correct.
Somebody approached us and asked us to put the agenda item on.
Right.
Fisher, he asked, he asked me.
Who that was?
He said Fisher.
Yeah, and two weeks ago, and so I'm confused also, because two weeks ago you came to my office, and you thought, and I agreed with you, I thought it was a good idea to bring this item to a head, let's bring it to the Selectmen, because the Selectmen are the only ones that can make this decision, the only place they can make a decision is at a public meeting, so when Mr. Fisher called me, I was on vacation last week, so he must have called me the end of the week before that, and said, can we make that an agenda item, I said, okay, because I thought we were going to have a public discussion, the Selectmen have not had, to Jim's point, nobody's brought it to them yet because it isn't really formally brought to them.
There's nothing before us.
Until it's at a public meeting, so they haven't made a decision yet, they haven't had a debate about it, they haven't had a discussion about it, so you're jumping to conclusions that they've changed their minds when they haven't even discussed.
So, we're asking for that, we're asking you to render a decision on something that is a pretty integral part of the area.
You're asking us to render a decision before anything is presented, and we're not going to do that, there's no way we can do that, I mean.
So, can I just ask a question, so when Fisher came to you, he was asking to, was it a request? Because his attorney said.
It was a verbal discussion about, about having a discussion about the Selectmen allowing emergency access on town property, and that's, that was the.
All right, that's a different message than I've gotten from him.
He said right in the 19th meeting.
And then his attorney said, we have no interest, we have not pursued that.
Yeah, and the discussion I had with Fisher today was, he was def, he, he's gotten mixed messages from the zoning board, so I think he's in a hard place too.
I think he is.
So the discussion I had with the chairman today, and I had an independent discussion with Jim, was, you know, should we have this based on Fisher's request, and I shared your concerns with him, and they said, no, the request, it's not on his plan, so he doesn't need it for, you know, as we understand it, and we're not zoning board experts, as we understand it, he doesn't need it for his project, but he, Fisher, it sounds like is being put in an awkward spot, so their recommendation to me was, let's take it off, and let's force, and I've written a memo to the zoning board, I said, let's have the zoning board make the request, because they're the ones that seem to be pushing Fisher, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate you putting that on the table, because that is not the way it's presented in the zoning board meetings.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't speak to the zoning.
Of course you can.
But all I can tell you is.
But it feels like there's what happens in the public meeting and then sidebars, and what my question is, is when do the sidebars come into the public discussion?
There are no sidebars on this, no one, no one has had a conversation with us, with me, and I assume with Scott, and I assume with Jeff, who's not here this evening, we, Jack said it quite clearly, and I, and, you know, we independently gave, which is always a good thing, the same feedback to Jack, you know, sometimes we don't, but most of the time we do, that this wasn't appropriate, that, you know, if this truly is a public safety issue and the ZBA feels that it's necessary to plan, then let them bring it forward, and in terms of.
Doesn't mean we'll say it's okay either, I mean, they bring it forward as their request.
We're not saying we approve or disapprove, and.
Well, in 2013, the same issue came up.
Every, every, and I voted no.
You guys made great points.
I was very firm about that.
You were very clear about the fundamentals.
No question about it, and you may not agree with everything I do, but I don't go back on my words.
And I appreciate that.
I will never do that, I, that's to me, you know, if I commit to something.
Integrity is everything.
I can be outvoted, you know, that's okay, but I won't, and I, believe me, I, I'm not, I haven't reached the point where I forget those things, I'm still remembering them, but you're absolutely right.
YouTube will kick them in perpetuity.
It's okay, well, thank God, but, you know, I won't ever reverse the commitment, the only thing I would say to you is, every, I believe that every person has a right to be heard, every issue has a right to be heard, and there may be differing circumstances that cause you to change that opinion, and don't misread that to say that I'm changing that, that's why you hear it, now, you know, and so I can't give you, I won't answer the question as to how I would, I will tell you that I haven't changed my mind on the prior set of circumstances, that's for sure, but I don't know what these circumstances are. You know, and you don't know, I know what they were before, and the impact that they had, and I know what the impact was, and part of the issue was, is that it limited our ability to reuse that land, had we given that right of way, and we had envisioned opportunities on how we might want to develop that land, so that clearly influenced my view, I did not want to take the town's ability to utilize that property off the table, that may or may not be the same set of circumstances here, you know, I, until someone comes before us, we're not in a position to voice an opinion, and it would be ill-judged if we did.
My concerns are, we're getting close to the end of the 25 Rockwood window of time that you get at the ZBA without an extension and all of that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem like this issue goes away, even when you have the developer saying, thanks anyway, I don't need it, I've got this covered, here's how I'll address the construction issue, and what I worry about is, oh, we're going to approve this permit, and then it's going to come up later, and I'm, we're just going to have no.
It would be, it would have to, my understanding is that any such approval would have to be part of the permit.
Not a condition or something they can do later, that.
I'm not an expert on the ZBA, but, but, well, I don't want to speak for Scott, so I, but I, I will speak for Scott in this regard, I mean, this is a transparent board. I mean, you can get mad at us, and that's okay, but we're, you know, we don't have any hidden agendas, we don't have private conversations, we don't, you know, to our fault, sometimes, because we all live here, we're just trying to do the right thing, so there's, that isn't going to happen, that isn't going to happen, we're, whatever happens is going to be out there in the public, people can come and argue and give their opinions, and we welcome that.
And I think too, I mean, to Jim's, I mean, I think Mr. Asham is trying to avoid controversy at all possible, right?
Of course, he's got multiple settlements in this town.
He was pretty happy when I called him today and told him not to come.
But one thing I will say, like, I mean, I think, because you mentioned, you know, about the chief pushing out, it's okay with the safety, but I mean, I, you know, people could be swayed, or the town could be swayed, if both our police chief and fire chief said, you know, this is a dire situation, if we don't have another access, we're putting lives at risk, I mean, you have to outweigh the good, you know, the needs of the many for the few.
Yeah, they haven't said that, though.
No, I haven't asked, I haven't seen that Jack's going to ask them to draft a settlement.
Well, it hasn't been presented in any of the meetings.
Right, because it hasn't been asked, because like you said.
It's been asked.
Well, the ZBA, you know.
Fisher's original plan had the emergency access road and hard piping his stormwater drainage into our drainage basin downtown. So those two issues we raised, not the ZBA, the second plan, those things were gone.
Well, that would have been dead in the water, because the ZBA is not empowered to do that, that would have been dead in the water.
Well, that's part of my concern is, it felt several times like the ZBA wasn't clear on what their purview really was, and what they were.
Let me just defend the ZBA for a second, okay, I mean, the planning board is the board that is empowered and is knowledgeable and experienced in the permitting process, the ZBA is not, the ZBA is a quasi-legal board that is basically yes or no, you know, people come before the ZBA to get an exception on our zoning.
Right.
The house is 49 feet from the street as opposed to 50 feet. Will you give me an exception? And they will rule yes or no. So they're sort of quasi-judicial. This crazy law we have around 40B says that all 40B projects, they don't go before the people that are experienced, the planning board. They go before the ZBA. And their logic is, is that you're circumventing our zoning, so...because it's a zoning issue, it goes...and these guys are inexperienced. You know, these are people that are learning on the go.
So there's one new guy. He's got it down. I don't know what he did first.
Yeah. We're pretty excited about him.
Yep. We're pleased to have him.
I'm so grateful to him and Attorney Hill, because they're the only two.
Because in a 40B project, that...this is the only opportunity we get to shape that project in any way as a town.
Correct.
So when we have a board that is seemingly as wandering a little aimlessly, it's important that we find a way to give them some direction in that, hey, that...maybe that's not an appropriate way for us to be looking at this.
Well, they're getting the direction, and that they've hired consultants. They've hired legal counsel. You know, we've approved the support to give them the network around them to help them get through this process. And so they're doing, I think, a very good job, but it's tough.
Attorney Hill is fantastic.
It's tough. It's a new world for us.
For all of us.
Yeah. And it's not that we didn't expect it. We saw it coming, and we tried to take some action, and the voters turned us down on that action. You know, 25 Rockwood Road, we wanted to bring into the B1 district so that the developer could develop it as a residential only. And...
It was rated density, though. It was 36.
No, no. He couldn't circumvent our zoning. He would have to negotiate that through the planning board. And that's why we wanted to bring him in. But then there was a petition that was brought forward by another resident that changed the zoning to require it to be mixed use, which completely eliminated his ability to develop residential, because no one's going to do mixed use back there. And so you left him. Only option was a 40B. And I got up in town meeting and said that. And I got told I was using scare tactics.
Well, my answer is, I don't have a problem with Fisher's development. I think the...and what I said at the town meeting during those discussions were that that's where the density belongs.
Not on Cleveland Street.
But this is our only opportunity to try and shape that and try and have any effect on that development, because it is what it is. It is a 40B project. Personally, we can go back and forth whether it would have made a difference, whether that was a private developer, or whether that was somebody who came with a 40B, or the threat of a 40B, which is what developers do, is, I think, regardless of whether you had said, "Hey, we're going to give you this zoning by right," that same developer, Fisher, whoever, would have come and said, "Hey, hey, 40B, that's what I'll do if you don't." And that's their muscle in the...
Sure. Sure. They can do whatever they want.
Yeah. So my answer was, "I'll take my chances." And I think this bears out that, you know, if we were talking about 36 by right, that's...we're at 32 right now. You know, it was an improvement in my mind.
And I feel like the participation of the people who come have shaped what it looks like today versus what he very first came with.
I think you're absolutely right.
And I respect that the board, you know, is sort of put in this funky position. I mean, somebody came up and said, "I don't know anything about any of this. I'm just a finance guy. Give me a balance sheet," which doesn't really make me feel better, because Mr. Howe really does have some technical expertise, and he's really digging in, not just on the 40B, but other issues that I'm like, "Yes." And so that's what I would expect from somebody on that board. But I can't get a direct answer on this. And I feel like there's a little tongue-in-cheek around this road. And so if they can't grant that road, Fisher isn't asking for that road, why are we still talking about that road?
We're not talking about it until someone formally comes before us...
Okay.
...and requests it. And what...well, I'll leave it to Mr. Hanson.
Exactly. No, no one's coming. I mean, again, it might be one person's ZBA opinion, and the ZBA would have to agree on that as well. So if the chairman wants an access road, and Mr. Hansen doesn't want an access road, and Mr. Weeder doesn't, you know, they won't ask for it. They won't require it. Again, and it still has to come before us and then come before the voters.
Yeah.
I have a procedural question. Ultimately, with the 40B project, the zoning board doesn't really vote on anything related to it anyway. I mean, they don't have to approve the project, right? So...
The zoning board approves the comprehensive permit.
They approve the permit.
Yeah. Planning board doesn't do anything.
The planning board has no say in this. Absolutely no say. They have no say in the process of a 40B.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily questioning the planning board's involvement. I was questioning the authority of the zoning board.
They have the right to approve or deny the permit. If they deny it, then they can appeal it to the state, and the state can overrule it. And the record with the state is 96%.
So my point is, it's a procedural thing, but ultimately, even if the zoning board...say the zoning board says they want the road, and they go to the state, and the state says, "Don't put in the road," I mean, ultimately, the zoning board has limited authority, because the state can overrule whatever's decided.
No, that's not the way it works.
Yeah. And this is just my opinion. But you have a developer who's saying, "Great. I don't have to build that road. I don't buy 40B standards. There's no...nothing that says you've got to make me build that road." But we also have a developer who has multiple developments and is going to be in front of multiple people in this town, and is a really nice guy. I mean, he came to our house. He's been very cordial. He's been, you know, "What can I do for you?" So he's somebody who's looking to work together. He's not an obstructionist. He's not digging his heels in.
It's a friendly 40B.
He's a very friendly guy.
Yeah.
And a friendly 40B. Like, I get it. That's a great lot. It's near the train station, all that stuff. I just don't understand why...I can't get a clear answer. Are we moving forward with an emergency access road or not? And I have neighbors who are like, "What? Emergency access road? Right across the street from my house? I had no idea." So we came here to say, "Here we are, and we are not going away."
And nor should you.
Right? Because we love Norfolk. We've been here for 12 and a half years. We just put a huge addition on our house, so we are not...
We're too deep in here going.
I know your house well. You did a lovely job, by the way.
Thank you.
Looks very nice.
Thank you. We're very happy with it. So, you know, and we love the...what this town brings us. The school systems have been amazing. So we come to those meetings not because we don't want a 40B in our backyard, because we want to make sure that whatever 40B goes in the backyard, because it's going, is something that fits with the town, that isn't too dense. Like, just get our...
It's a super visible site, and I think that's something that maybe a lot of people aren't fully appreciating.
Until the trees are gone.
The impact that that's going to have on what the downtown looks like, you know, when you clear cut seven acres of what is almost entirely tree lots, seven plus acres, whatever it is, you know, and just the way that sighting is, we're all going to be looking at that development for a very long time.
Yeah. Well, I compliment both of you, because you're going at it the right way. You're managing what you can manage...
Right.
...as opposed to fighting what you can't fight.
Right.
And it's a great way to do it.
I'd like to see a little bit of direction, maybe from the ZBA, that if, in fact...because when the same engineer came before the board in 2013, looking for the same or a similar situation...
Yep.
The answer to him was sort of unequivocally no.
You were on that. Scott and I were both part of that decision.
Everybody here was...
Well, I don't think Jeff was on the board.
No, I don't think...
Not Jeff. I meant everybody present.
Yeah, but Scott and I both were on that decision.
So it was pretty unequivocal no. And the answer was, "You have other options. You can find another way out that doesn't involve going through the town." The same situation is true here. 94, the Fugliari, the old bank property, directly abus. No train tracks in between. If the access road is important, why aren't we encouraging him to go privately with that before he goes publicly through that?
We can't answer that.
Where is this? Where is that?
I know what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about.
Berks. Berks.
Berks, the Berks building.
Yeah, that. And he's before the town right now, developing that property.
He withdrew that.
Right. So...
Yeah, he withdrew that program.
Yeah. So...
He did.
Seems like a...
Doesn't mean it won't come back, but...
...perfect way to link those two together.
This isn't the board to ask that question. You know, the only role we play in this...
The guys that can tell them, and the guys that can push them, and that's what we're looking for.
The only role we can play is if someone brings something before us, that we have the authority to deal with. And no one has done that.
Right.
My understanding from Mr. Cleese is, two weeks from tomorrow, they're going to have an agenda item that talks about making a request to the selectmen for...
Whether they should or shouldn't.
Whether or not they're going to...they're going to have a question that says, "Do we go to the selectmen and ask them for access to...for an emergency access road?" That should be an interesting discussion.
And you guys should participate in that conversation. I'm sure you will.
I will. Is it at the next...
Not tomorrow night.
Not tomorrow night. My understanding is, the next one is two weeks from tomorrow night.
The next Rockwood Road ZBA meeting, or just the next ZBA meeting? Because there's so many...
He told me it was two weeks from tomorrow night. That's all I can tell you.
Look at the ZBA's agenda for tomorrow. 25 Rockwood Road is not part of the agenda, so they won't bring it up there.
Because we didn't want to hear this today, because we didn't think it was coming to us the right way.
Yes. Well, I appreciate that.
We pulled it from the agenda, or requested it, or Scott actually did. And you sent an email to Mike, telling him that we didn't, you know, that this isn't the way we think it should happen.
And I guess, for me, I want Mr. Kaluza to give me, or the citizens of this town, the evidence of why he's requesting that. He's never articulated that, because he doesn't have the evidence from the fire chief or the police chief that a secondary access road, given the current plan that is before the board...
There's an access road there now.
He's made a bunch of revisions.
What access road is there now?
The spur, the road that comes through. And Chief Cole spoke to the fact that I can get a fire truck down there.
Right.
But that's the access that would be used for the Norfolk Housing Authority.
Yep.
Right. A catastrophic emergency. They're going to go there no matter what, however high water.
And he can. He can.
Well, Jack enlightened me on that. The issue with that is, come winter, though, because it's a dirt road, you know, not very easily plowable. So now you're going to ask...say we had the storms. We had 16 feet of snow. Can't plow that. We have a major fire there. Roads are blocked going in. Now we're going to see our neighbors die, because we have no way in. See, I mean, I think, you know, I'm not...I can't get in Mike's mind, but...
Okay. Well, we have neighbors, then, all over the town of Norfolk, who are going to die, because the emergency access can't get to that.
Right. So I mean, I'm not putting words in Mike's mouth, but is it better to err on the side of caution, or not, you know, in terms of having emergency access roads or not?
Well, you know, just to back up, that the very first proposal that Mr. Hescham put forth had the emergency road on it, and the hard piping into our drainage. So we were like, "Okay, this looks like this is going to happen." And we said, "Okay, if you...if we're going to move forward with this road, then why don't we carry it all the way past the train tracks, because we have tons of people?" I don't know if you're one of them...
I used to walk for years, all the time.
Right. Who crossed the...
Scott lives right down the street from it.
I know.
I walk right down there.
I know. It's going to be his...
Yeah, no. I'm a pseudo-butter, so believe me.
So we said to Mr. Hescham, "Hey, what if you created a pedestrian way, right?" A lot of family in Canada, they have pedestrian ways all over their town, bike paths...
To keep people from making...
To keep people...yeah, to bring people to downtown, right? This is all about smart growth. We want people downtown. This is our vision. We have Cape Cod Estates. They can't even have a sidewalk that goes from Cape Cod Estates all the way to downtown. Here's our opportunity...yeah, I heard that's coming.
Coming.
Here's our opportunity to connect one of the largest neighborhoods to downtown, make a safe path to the train, yada, yada, yada.
Those are all good ideas.
Right? And so we were like, "All right, embrace this road that's going to be alongside our house. It used to be a dirt path." Mr. Hescham came back and said, "You know what? It's actually shorter to walk all the way around on the sidewalk. We don't need the road."
I don't know if it's short. I find it, I go straight. It's sort of for me, rather than when you live.
You know where we are now. You know why it's...how it got on the agenda, and why it's off the agenda.
Yes.
Let's, you know, if the ZBA chooses to bring it forward, and, you know, then their issue is going to be to justify that there's a real significant public safety issue that we need to think about.
Right.
And they'll need to justify that to this board.
And you guys, it'll be public, and you guys, you know, your neighbors will come...
They will need to justify that.
And we'll take all that in, again, like you said, you know.
Because we certainly have set...both Scott and I have set a precedent in terms of our view about using public land for private projects, private developments.
Right. Well, I feel the same way. I mean, where does it end?
But we also have to consider, you know, and this is where the fire chief and the police chief would commit, because, you know, I'm not, you know, we're not a public safety expert, nor is the ZBA. You know, we would look to them.
Right.
But just as important is the precedent that that sets, particularly in a town like Norfolk, that is so vulnerable to these 40B projects. This is far from the last that we're going to be dealing with as a town. And when we set that precedent of allowing a developer special access to, for emergency purposes, how do you then say no to the next guy that comes down the road?
Well, the only...I would only make this distinction, and this, just in my own mind. The number-one priority for me is to keep people safe.
Mm-hmm.
That's my number-one priority. This is why we have ALS in town. This is why we buy more cruisers, because our police are on the streets 24/7. I mean, if we do nothing else, we have an obligation to keep our people safe.
Safety has a well-being. That's all that matters.
So whatever prioritizes that for me, gets my support. Now, there are extending your circumstances around issues that we have to weigh. And one of them was down there, because there were alternatives.
There are yours, well.
And there may very well be. So, you know, I can't judge what I haven't heard.
Right.
We pass judgment on what we heard.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, made our decision, and you know what that was, and would make the same decision again today.
Right. It would just be nice if there was some direction to Mr. Kaluza around, "Look, if you're going to push for this, then maybe ask more than just this paved road. Maybe you go back to, how do you bring people downtown safely?"
Oh, so forget. Now, if it comes to us, again, we, you know, I wouldn't say, "Hold his feet to the fire," but we come back. We're not giving away, and you guys have to prove it at a town meeting. We're not giving away the land. I don't want to be crazy. Say, "I want a new well."
Scott's point is well taken.
"I want a skybridge over the tracks."
We haven't had that opportunity yet.
I'm not giving anyone, me personally, you guys...
I think you've watched this enough to know we don't give it away.
Right.
So it would come with a price. Now, again, I also don't like starting, like you said, precedent, because does it ever stop? We don't know.
Yeah. Well, it just makes you vulnerable.
So, yeah, he doesn't, you know, and he knows. Mr. Hescham's pretty good about that. He knows that it wouldn't be...it wouldn't come, you know, if he was required to have by ZBA, we'd then have the ability to go back and say, "You know what? Yeah, we need this road improved. We need pedestrian access, so they're not stuck. So instead of walking down the middle of our road, they can watch the right on a sidewalk to the train station."
Go to downtown and take our kids to their...
And again, and if he says no, and say, "You know what?", then you don't get it, and then the ZBA has that reason to say they don't have to issue permission.
Please be comfortable. There's no side discussions. There's no side deals. We don't work that way.
Okay. That's good. That's great. I appreciate that.
Never have.
No, I'm glad we came, because I just want to-
No, I'm glad you did, too.
Get it on the table, and-
Glad you did, too. Thank you.
That road comes. We have some ideas, so-
And I do love that sweatshirt.
Thanks.
I think he's pitching, I think he's pitching, I think he's pitching for it, but-